What we'll do is we'll take a roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Borsma.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mieski.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Duranik.
Here.
O'Connor is absent and excused.
And are there any communications tonight from Alders? Elder Person Borsma.
Yeah, thank you very much, Your Honor. I have sort of a communication, sort of a show and tell demonstration tonight. Tonight, there's going to be a second reading of the Keeping of Chickens. And I brought a fine-feathered constituent of mine who can't talk about it, but I did bring him, he's wearing my hat right now. And so, he can't really talk about the ordinance, but he would really, he really would be overjoyed if this passes. And I ask that each of the Alders be a good egg and vote aye.
I think you're a cracked egg.
Anybody want to follow that? Any more communications?
Can't. Do it.
Okay. Oh. I have a couple of communications. The city attorney won't be here tonight. We do have somebody on call if we need to call for question or backup. Holly has the number. And then also, we were scheduled to have Bill Foster here from Community Perceptions, and due to the weather, he's not going to be here, so that item's going to be postponed. And I think that's all I had for communications. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. There are no presentations this evening. Minutes and reports are in the packet. And that takes us to item number three, which is public comment period. We have one person signed up for public comment, and that would be Roger Springman. He can come to the podium and state your address and...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Roger Springman, 812 Creedeman Drive, Stoughton, Wisconsin. Here tonight on behalf of the RDA. I'm using my few minutes with you to support the two RDA initiatives in the agenda tonight, which are items 16 and 17. And I will remain here throughout the evening for questions, so later on, if you have questions as those items come up, I'll be glad to answer them. So item one is a lifting of the demo moratorium on the Blacksmith Shop. And I thought I'd just give you just a snippet of the RDA's view on this, and that would be about two years ago, the council passed a moratorium to prevent demolition of the building. And since then, the new RDA that began this past year under my leadership has been working to make sure that the old contract with the demolition contractor was as good as it could be, and we worked to get some improved changes to the contract regarding the structure. Last September, we worked with Engberg Anderson to prepare a couple preliminary architectural designs for the Blacksmith Shop, how it could become an exciting building for the community. And I think one or two of those were put in the hub. You may recall those diagrams. And the last thing we've done, just to kind of call this to your attention, is that in our new RFEI, which is just about done, I know I keep saying that, but it really is just about done, and ready to go out to around 100 developers, does include reference to the Blacksmith Shop in it. So we've really worked our darndest to make sure that the building lives as a building useful to the community in as many ways as possible. However, fate was not on our side. The building, as you know, was always sensitive. It was always a fragile building, from its mortar to its structure, steel structure. And our contractor got a bit too aggressive during the demolition process, as you know. And then beyond that, the October 20th windstorm created that massive hole in the northwestern corner. And of course, since then, Mother Nature's been raining down on it, or snowing down on it now, causing more issues. And a few other holes have been observed, I'm sure, by you as well as by me. So we're in a different spot now than we were last fall in particular. And so what the RDA has been thinking and has been finally decided, finally decided to do recently was to ask the city council to lift the moratorium, so we have flexibility and efficiency of movement and nimbleness of movement in case bad things keep happening, and we've got to just move it down quickly. Spring is just about here. We know what happens in spring, winds, rains, et cetera. And we've just got to be ready to move so that it doesn't become a safety hazard. So that's our request for item one tonight, is to lift that moratorium that's been around for a couple of years, or about a couple of years. And the other item is the public works transfer situation, which does include the powerhouse. And as you all know, here, in broad principle, the city and the RDA have always agreed, at least in my opinion, they've always agreed that the Riverfront property and its inherited 11-acre site would make the best combined spot to put the power, put the powerhouse and the public workspace within. And that's been our operating principle of understanding and agreement, is that the powerhouse would be a very logical add to the RDA Riverfront project site area. And that's been our goal for two years, to get that transferred over to the RDA, so that work can be accomplished. And as I said a moment ago, we're just about done with the RFEI. It's going to go out to 100 developers in the region. And we did include in this document that is on our RDA website for tomorrow's night's meeting with the RDA, the nearly completed manuscript, which does include language saying that we are in the process of transferring the public works site to the RDA. So we've got to live up to those words, because if we don't live up to them in a couple months, when the developers come here, it just won't look good for us not to have done anything. So our motion tonight is to have you encouraged to create a process by which we can work with city officials to get this transfer process up and moving and get this done, so we get this thing up on the market, we get developers interested in the full, about 11 acres, and we make Stoughton better than it ever could be, or what we could imagine it to be, by opening up that full site to full and proper development. So that's our second request for tonight, then. And I'll hang around then for questions later. Thank you.
Thank you. And would anyone else like to address the council tonight? And seeing none, that'll take us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, consists of three items, and we vote on them in the consent agenda. They're routine items, and we put them on there just to keep the meeting more efficient. We can vote on them as a group. So I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
There's a motion by Elder Person Jensen.
Second.
And a second by Elder Person Reeves. Would anybody like anything removed and taken separately from the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Thank you. We have old business, and we have a number of items coming from the Planning Commission. So we'll start out with ordinance two of 2019. Elder Person Bartlett.
Bringing forth ordinance two, 2019, amending zoning code section 78-206, pair eight, pair Y, keeping of chickens, the Stoughton Municipal Code. Planning Commission approves six to zero, and I move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Bartlett, and the second by Jensen. We'll open it up for discussion. Anybody have any? Matt, did you have anything that you wanted to add to it?
Just that we did have a public hearing at the public, at the Planning Commission. Had a lot of comments in support of changing this. There was a letter in your packet that outlined a lot of the reasons that it was requested, so I definitely support it and encourage everyone else to as well.
Any questions or concerns from Alders? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item number six is ordinance three of 2019. Elder Person Bartlett.
Ordinance three of 2019, amending section six dash two, pair B, keeping of animals of the Stoughton Municipal Code. This was a second reading, Planning Commission approves six zero on January 14th, and I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Bartlett, and a second by Jensen.
This was just cleaning up the code, removing the chickens from the keeping of animals, and it would have a reference to the other section that we just approved.
Any questions or comments on that one? Elder Person Hirsch.
Well, I guess the last one went so fast. I was reading what you had sent me in an email about the size of the coop, and I see that that did not get on the ordinance that we just voted on. I was just making this comparison, and I was wondering why that did not get on there. Because you, the mayor, had sent it to me after last meeting for, that said that. So I'm sorry, I wasn't able to speak up quick enough, because I was, you guys voted on it before I could even raise my hand, so, um... There was an amendment on the first one that said that coop shall be a minimum of three feet, square feet per hen, chicken and run. Area shall be a minimum of 10 square feet in area per, per hen. And that did not get into the one that we just voted on.
Yes, go ahead.
We haven't done anything with oh three, so if you want to reconsider the oh two for, for making amendment, we can do that.
Yep.
It would just have to be voted on for the reconsideration. You would have to make the motion.
Move to reconsider.
Or ask for it to be reconsidered.
I would like to, it's oh two to be reconsidered, because I think that's the one that goes into...
All right, so we have a motion for reconsideration. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mieski. Any questions on the reconsideration? So that'll allow us to go back and have an opportunity to look at that amendment that I assume is going to be proposed.
Well, it wasn't...
Right, or next time?
Well, it should be proposed, because I got this via the mayor after our last, the first reading, that shows that it was amended to a letter M, or at the end, that says coop shall be a minimum of three square feet in area per hen chicken, and run area shall be a minimum of 10 square feet in area per hen chicken. And this was sent to him by Mike Stacy, so I was wondering why it was not included.
We didn't update it in the packet, is apparently what happened. We left the original one in there.
Right. And so I'd like to see the amended one actually be the one that gets passed.
So the motion then is to, is, would be to go back then and to consider that. Is there any questions on the motion?
Um, yeah. I mean, if in fact, the amended ordinance did not get in the packet, and since we don't have it, I would really like to see this maybe go on the next agenda with the amended ordinance, so that I can read through it, because I'm not, I think I understand what Regina is saying, but it would seem to me that it might be better.
We can do it either way. I mean, she would just be adding it on, the language is, she just read it as an amendment. So it's up to you guys what you'd like to do. There's a motion on there right now to basically to reconsider.
Right.
So we should vote on that, and then we can go back, and then we can have that conversation.
Can I just explain why this came up?
Sure.
At the last meeting, the first reading, my concern was is that you increased from four chickens to six chickens, but if you don't tell people that they actually have to increase the size of their coop, they're going to be smashing six chickens into a four chicken space.
Right.
And to prevent animal abuse, the mayor went back to Mike Stacy, who drafted this and sent me the amendment, but apparently didn't get into the packet. And so this is what Mike Stacy had, I assume it was Mike Stacy, had researched it. This is consistent with what I had said. And so he just made that amendment to make sure that the people that have six chickens, they have to expand their, their coops and their, their chicken runs.
Elder Person Reeves.
I wouldn't need to see it in writing, as long as, I mean, just like any other amendment, if it's just a redback, just to make sure I understand it, rather than postpone it, I'd be, I would be fine with not seeing it in writing personally.
Any other questions on the motion? So the motion's just to reconsider, so we can go back and decide if we want to amend it, or if we want to send it back, or bring it back at the next meeting.
I was just going to say that I think any further discussion needs to be done after the vote for reconsideration.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. So we're back really to the original motion.
Right. And I would like to amend the original motion to include language M.
Okay, language M says coop shall be a minimum of three square feet in the area per hen chicken, and run area shall be a minimum of 10 square feet in area per hen chicken.
Okay, and that's the only amendment, then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's it. And I'm guessing from my conversation with Michael that the ones that he's aware of are in compliance already, but we would have to, you know, double-check them as part of our inspections.
That's a motion?
That's the amendment.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion on that? Everybody understand the language? Okay, so all in favor of the, of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. So really, it takes us back to the original motion as amended, right?
Right.
Okay. Any questions on the original motion as amended? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Nice catch. Thank you.
Oh, three's already been introduced, Your Honor, so we can just go into the...
Okay, so we're at ordinance...
Ordinance three of 2019.
Yep. And we had a motion and a second on that one. And then, any other questions for that one? Anything you want to cover on that one, Matt, or...
Nope, self-explanatory, just put a reference to the other chicken one we just approved.
Okay. Any questions or concerns about that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Number seven is ordinance four of 2019. Elder Person Bartlett.
Ordinance four of 2019, amending the zoning code section 78-916, pair two, pair O, zoning administrator of the Stoughton Municipal Code. Planning Commission approves six zero on January 14th, and move to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second by Jensen. Go ahead, Matt.
Make sure I have the right one. This was one also to kind of clean it up. This gave the, I believe, the building inspector the authority to grant minor variations from some of our zoning codes, which is not used, so we're just cleaning up and removing that. When they need exceptions to our code, they come to the Planning Commission. He doesn't grant them in places. Is that correct, Rania, fair characterization?
Yeah, variances actually go through the Board of Appeals. So they would go, there is a Board of Appeals process for variance consideration. There were no standards that really allowed us the latitude to grant arbitrary variances, so that's why we feel it's still the strongest and best method to utilize the Board of Appeals process, which is a quasi-judicial body that can evaluate the request, instead of having an individual make that determination.
Okay. Elder Person Hirsch.
And this is for ordinance, ordinance four. I just have, I think it's fine, but under a letter C, and I think letter G, I guess I would like to make those two sections gender neutral. They keep on saying him and his, and yes, even though we have a male zoning administrator now, it would be nice to keep it gender neutral, because we don't know what the future holds.
Certainly do that.
I guess I'm not understanding, because this is just a repeal of the entire section, so it'll be all...
Is this ordinance number four? Are we on four?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on four.
Ordinance four is repeal of the whole, of the section 78 dash five one eight, so...
No, that's five.
No verbiage.
Repealing is number five. Ordinance number seven is the, amending the zoning ordinance.
And we're good.
I am, I'm five, I'm sorry. My fault.
So C has a number of things of sentence structures that needs to be changed.
Yeah, we can clean that up. That's not a problem. You got no run there, huh?
And so, and I think there's another section. I think G was another one.
Yep.
Okay.
An I.
An I?
And J.
And J. So I guess all of it.
You're consistent.
[laughing].
All right. Anything else on that one? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor with the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. All right. Now we're on ordinance five of 2019. Elder Person Bartlett.
Ordinance five of 2019, repealing zoning code section 78 dash five one eight of the Stoughton Municipal Code. Plan approved six to zero on January 14th, and move to approve.
Second.
Second by Elder Person Hirsch. Go ahead, Matt.
This is repealing a section of the code that referenced a residential historic design overlay zoning district. It's not in agreement with some of our other codes. It references a guideline, which very little of it is available anymore. I found some of it online, but it's a guide dated from 1998 that I wasn't able to find, so it doesn't make sense to reference it. Landmarks Committee did look at this, and they had no issue with removing this section as well. Is anything Director Shiel would like to add?
It was a good summary.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that one carries. Takes us, item nine is ordinance six of 2019. Elder Person Bartlett.
Bring forth ordinance six of 2019, repealing section 10 dash 34, pair B, electrical contractors' license, and I move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second by Jensen. Go ahead.
This has to deal with, in the past, we had licensed electrical contractors, I think a number of years ago, I think it's over six, I don't remember what year it was, but the state took over those duties. They now control licensing for these electrical contractors, so we have no role in this. So we are removing that from our code.
Any questions and comments on that one?
I believe it was 2014.
Okay. Yep.
I'm going to research, yeah.
Okay. Anything else on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. All right. Takes us to new business. Item number 10 is aldermatic district four appointment. Elder Person Jensen.
Yes, Your Honor, with the approval of council, I'd like to make a motion that we through unanimous consent, just approve the appointment of Mr. Healy?
Healy.
Healy? Okay. I think he's the only appointment, the only person applying for the appointment, and his resume is in the packet. I feel it's kind of unnecessary for us to go through the, all the formalities, and I'd like to just see us vote.
Second.
Okay. Second by Bartlett. Any discussion on that one? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Congratulations. Holly will come to the podium and swear yin, and if you have a few words to say, you're more than welcome to do that, and then we'll get you seated.
So if you could just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Ben Healy.
Having been elected, or I'm sorry, having been appointed to...
Having been appointed to...
The office of District Four Alderperson.
The office of District Four Alderperson.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will discharge those duties to the, the duties of this office.
And will discharge the duties of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
Thank you. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Ben Healy. I've been a member of Stoughton community for about three years now. I work over in Middleton as a compliance specialist. My wife, Sarah, works over at Riverbluff. She teaches sixth grade special ed. And I look forward to jumping in and learning how I can best serve all members of the community.
Thank you, welcome.
Yeah.
Welcome.
All right. We're going to put them right over here. All right.
Between the two lovely ladies.
Oh, boy.
[laughing].
They'll be asking for the assignment.
And just so you know, the council president determines the seating, so...
Did you want to move him somewhere else, Tom?
No, I think it's a fine spot.
Okay.
All right.
You don't want him to, you don't want me to influence him?
Oh, yes.
But he's got Lisa on the other side of him, so...
The voice of reason.
Well behaved. They put me in the corner all the time. I'm the chief.
And just give us a holler when you're ready, we'll...
Welcome aboard, Basil.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Just let me know when you're ready, and we'll get you going here.
And I'd just like to abstain from any votes tonight, just until I get my feet under me.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, though. I mean, sometimes we go kind of quickly, and if we need to slow down, just say the word, and we'll be glad to walk you through it. We're on item number 11 under new business, which is Resolution 15 of 2019, and this one's coming from our finance committee. Elder Person Duranik.
Yes. Finance Committee met on January 22nd and recommends approval of R15 2019, providing for the sale of approximately $7.4 million in general obligation promissory notes, series 2019A, and I so move.
Second.
And there's a motion and a second? Elder Person Duranik.
Well, I think that we'll let Director Friedel address this.
Okay. This is actually pretty straightforward. It's just the borrowing needed for our CIP plan. The dollar amounts actually are almost identical to what we went through in the CIP plan. The project funds are actually identical, and you can see the total financing comes to around 7.4. Joe Maria Springstead has it at 7.43. So again, it's a pretty straightforward resolution. We do this every single year, but I'm happy to entertain any questions.
And does anybody have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So item number 12 was the R16 of 2019. We were going to have Bill Foster here from Community Perceptions. Due to the weather, he decided not to make the trip from Milwaukee. I can tell you, I spoke with him yesterday, and he was at a conference last week, and he's booked up for the year. So I'm not really sure when we want to bring him in here, but he wouldn't be able to do any work for us this year. He had a window of opportunity, and it disappeared real quickly. So apparently, his work with the school districts are real busy right now.
I'm going to table.
So I was going to give you a quick update. The reason, I have this new book.
Yes, yes, I saw that.
Yeah, and the reason I brought it is, they've made some changes. I went to a seminar at the fire station a few weeks ago on parliamentary procedures, and what they're recommending we do now is not to table it.
Okay.
They're recommending postponements. And then with the postponements, you can put a certain date, if you wish, but when you table it, when you would table something is when you want to bring it back after another item that you really want to act on immediately. So they've kind of changed the procedures, and they have this new fancy book, and I can get you one if you really want to get into it, but... So they're calling it postponement now, and the other advantage of postponing it is you can actually have a debate on it, where the way we used to do it, we table it, and there was no discussion. So that's another new wrinkle, and this is something I'm going to review with Attorney Dregony as well, so we're on the same page. So I want to at least bring that to your attention. We can certainly do whatever you want to do tonight. Bottom line is, is we're not going to take any action, so I don't know if we really So I don't know if we really need to do anything, but that's up to you guys.
Make a motion to postpone it?
We could do that.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I could comment on that if I could. I remember reading the Robert's Rules of Order, however, that when you table something, it's supposed to come back to the very next session, too.
Right, and with this, you can postpone it definitely, if you want to put a date on it, or indefinitely, if you never want to discuss it again. Or you can just postpone it and just kind of leave it out there, which is, I think, what the intent is here.
The, the good part of the tabling was, was that it, it would come back automatically to the next session, and I think that's how I've been.
So what you'd want to do is postpone it.
To the next session.
And name the date.
You can't, because the guy's not gonna be able to come.
Right. In this particular case, we're just gonna postpone it, and it could be next year, for all I know. So, and there's another, there's other changes that I'll try to communicate with you as they come along, but that was kind of the major one, which is different than our practice, so I felt tonight was a good opportunity to bring that up.
Just, just to point out, our little cheat sheets here, I don't know how many of you have them.
I have a new cheat sheet.
Yeah. This one has to be updated because it's.
I just printed it out today.
Two different postponements in here, and one is for, just to postpone until later in the meeting, and the other one is to postpone indefinitely.
Right.
Which basically kills it for the session. So, yeah, so there's a third one, nothing?
Yeah, and I think the one that, yeah, it's, they're trying to get clarity.
We'll go with it.
We'll go with it, and then there's another one in there, I can't remember what it's called, no, I lost my place, where if somebody makes a motion, and then instead of withdrawing it, there's another term that you can use to vote on it, so you can do it that way, instead of having to withdraw and withdraw the second, because that's not really recognized, because somebody's already made the motion. Although, when you do that, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the minutes. In fact, they encourage you not to put it in the minutes if you didn't actually vote on it. So there's just little things like that we learned during that, and I'm hoping that they'll come back, and others will have an opportunity to sit through it. It's kind of interesting. People are, you know, that's what they do. They become parliamentarians, and I'm by no means a parliamentarian, but I wanted to share what I learned.
Was there a second on that motion?
There was, yep. So anyway, we have a motion and a second to postpone this. Are there any questions on it? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, and we have abstractions. You're getting all those right. Okay. So that takes us to R seventeen of two thousand and nineteen, and that's coming from the finance committee. All the person Durantik.
Yes, the Finance Committee met on January twenty-second and recommends approval of R seventeen twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to allocate up to five thousand dollars for the twenty nineteen fireworks display, which I assume will come from contingency, and I so move.
Second.
And this is a second by all the person Jensen. Anything you want to add, Denise?
Well, I think you're the one that has been working on this with.
I have been.
So you probably want to just.
Sure.
Address it.
So in your packet, you'll see a request from the Chamber of Commerce. They've offered to raise up to five thousand dollars from local businesses for the fireworks, and they would like us to basically provide the balance. Usually, the fireworks cost somewhere between seven and ten thousand dollars. So this would be a city-sponsored fireworks on the Fourth of July. The site is yet to be determined. We wanted to get approval before we got too far ahead of ourselves. Although, we have looked at a few potential sites, but we haven't really made any decisions yet. So it would be city-sponsored, and it would be under the direction of the, under the fire chief. And then, anything that we would have to do as far as, you know, providing the site and the security for that, we would do with city staff. All the person Borzma.
Question that is, I noticed that it's four to one, I believe, and is, is the person who voted against it present tonight?
Yes, I voted against it because, for me, this is not a priority. I'm not sure how many of you are aware, but Dean County is slowly but surely moving the services from our human service building here in Stoughton into Madison. And for me, I would rather spend the money on something like, say, transportation, for those people who are now going to have to try to find a way to get to the job center or to other human services in Madison. And as we know, many of those people have a difficult time, and we also know how expensive it is to get to Madison from here. So for me, this was really not a priority. I would like us to spend our money in some other ways. If not something like transportation, then maybe, you know, improving the wage scale, you know, because we keep losing people who, you know, find better-paying jobs somewhere else, and that costs us money to hire someone, you know, go through the hiring process, and to, you know, train them. So, you know, that's why I voted against it. I felt that there's more than enough entertainment out there for people, so.
Okay. All the person Borzma.
Follow up with that question, and that is, if it was a lower amount, Denise, if it was a more reasonable amount than five thousand, would you be happy with that?
It's, it's not a priority for me, Sid. I mean, you know, I think that there are so many other more important things that we should be spending our money on. And, you know, that's just the way, that, that's my, that's my value system there.
All the person Reeves.
So I've actually never lived in a community that the city has paid anything toward the fireworks. I know Rockford, a hundred and fifty thousand people almost, doesn't spend a dime, and it's community-based fundraising. And so I would agree with Denise, not that I, I don't like fireworks as much as the next person, but the people who are most enthusiastic about seeing this, you know, the folks in the community. I happen to know a couple of volunteers who reached out to the chamber and said, you know, we would help get some funds from our community and get them invested and involved. And it's, it's really not a big deal. I mean, you've pretty much just set up a fund, and people contribute, and sometimes people, you know, businesses might put out a bucket on their counter. They may not, but people are willing to sort of take the initiative, so I would agree that, I just, I don't know that this, this doesn't make sense to me financially, to spend this kind of money. I think that the community, this is a really easy one for people to get involved with, and a few bucks goes a long way, so I'm, I'm not gonna be in favor of this.
All the person Borzma.
When I was a youngster, a long time ago, we had a little town, I was in Friesland, Wisconsin, and the, the people, the people in charge of Friesland, which was a very small town, rallied many of the kids to go to, to homes to, to ask for donations for it. And they never had any problem coming up with an adequate amount of money for fireworks, using that procedure. I was one of them, and it was a little bit scary to go to homes like that and ask for money for, from farmers or whatever. So I, I tend to agree. I, it seems to me that it would be a worthwhile effort to have that come from the community rather than from, directly from the city. I'm not sure that it's really an important city function, and I agree with, especially Denise, that there are some other priorities related to transportation, related to getting people to the job center, relating to, to whole, whole other ways that we can spend our money, so I will not be voting in favor of this.
All the person Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. One, what have we done in the past with respect to the fireworks? Has the city ever been involved at all with regard to funding them in any way, shape, or form?
We have. Last year, the city did not sponsor any fireworks, and as an older person at the time, I had a lot of phone calls and emails about people that really were upset that we didn't have them. Previous to that, the year before, we had an arrangement with the fair, where we combined resources, and we had fireworks on the Fourth, and then they have them traditionally on the last night of the fair, which is a Sunday night. There were some issues with the vendor that year, so that was the only year we partnered with them. And previous to that, as far as I can remember, and I've been here since eighty-six, the city had always sponsored fireworks. It was taken out of the budget last year, and there was really nobody that stepped up to try to, try to put any money toward it. This year, the chamber had offered to do that. We're at a point where in the next few weeks, we would want to secure a vendor if we were to go forward. It certainly wouldn't stop the conversation as far as trying to get more local people and groups involved, and next year, if that would be the desire of the council, I would certainly try to work with some groups, but for this year, I think, you know, we're at a point where if we're gonna do it, and we're gonna secure a vendor, you know, the city's gonna have to participate.
Can I follow?
Sure.
Thank you. You know, I don't disagree with anything that Councilperson Durantik said, nor with anything that Councilperson Reeves is saying. I think something like this is important to a community. I just do. It may seem frivolous, however, as part of, we want to, I think, have community activities, et cetera, that set us apart, or that are special, or that are important to the citizens of this community. Is this as important as transportation to Madison compared directly? No, it's not. However, it's a relatively small sum of money. It is important, I think. It's something that allows the community to celebrate that particular day. It's, it's something that I think the mayor noted, that when it was not there, people noticed it. I don't think it's an awful lot of money to dedicate to something like that. I think it's important, so I'll be supporting it.
All the person Jensen.
Yeah. A couple of things to keep in mind, just to remind you that the chamber is raising funds. They are soliciting funds from their members and from other commercial ventures. Also, if you, if you think about it, it's, it's tax money, so in essence, that is a donation from the taxpayers of the city toward this. So, you know, it's, it is, in essence, the same thing as us going out and trying to collect money from them. I, I, I don't really see a problem with this. I agree with, with him that it's, it's, you know, a relatively small amount of money. It, it does have a lot of importance. I did have many people in my district also wondering why in the world we didn't, you know, do this last year, you know, so, yeah, it's, I, I think it's worthwhile.
All the person Reeves.
So just as a follow-up, I did get some calls, and every person that I said, would you be willing to contribute if the city doesn't have the funds, everyone said absolutely. So, you know, and, and the unfortunate thing is, like I said, we had, I know a couple volunteers who reached out to the chamber and said, how can we help get the community involved, and the phone call wasn't returned. So it's, it's just frustrating for me.
But the chamber is soliciting funds this year?
Right, from businesses, but the community as a whole is not, has not been a part of it. These were people who are just neighbors, who said, hey, how can we, as a community, get together and set up, you know, a fund, what's our, you know, get us in touch with the right people, and so, but aside from that, I do, I personally just feel like it should really be, I'd love to see the community behind it, so that's just my stance.
All the person, did you have anything else you wanted to add, and then there'll be Riley after you.
I, I guess I, I agree with all of you, because I agree that we should have put this in the budget if this is what we were gonna fund. I don't like everything always coming out of contingents, but I also got a lot of phone calls, too, that people like to have fireworks, and they were very upset, especially the year when it only lasted three seconds. But I also would like us to encourage the, the chamber to actually do a GoFundMe site, or whatever it is, to open it up for the community that it can be. But we have to figure out how to make this sustainable. If this is what we want, then it shouldn't be coming out of contingents every year. It should be part of the budget. So I guess I would support it this year, but next year, it needs to be part of the budget, and I, I would like it, us to pay only, at the max, twenty-five hundred, and have the community do the rest.
All the person Riley.
Thank you, Mayor. When I was a youth, which is about the same amount of time ago as Mr. Borzma over here, I grew up in Madison. They had fireworks every year at Vilas Park. It was, it was just a wondrous thing. And it was sponsored to a degree by the city, if I'm not mistaken. It was also sponsored, I think, by the Lions Club. And they had donation points of, you know, at the entryways to the fireworks. I don't see any reason why we could not, this year, provide the support, but also start to build a fund for next year by having donation points at the entryways or around the fireworks display itself. So I think we can have both things happening. I think if we need to help fund this in order to make sure it happens this year, again, I'm gonna support that.
Any other questions or comments?
Not sure, legality or something like that. I think the chamber would have to do the fundraising, but I don't think that we.
Right.
Can do that.
Sorry, yeah, and I would, I would agree. I mean, and, you know, whatever, whatever organization do it, the chamber can do it or whatever. It just, it would help fund next year.
Yeah, and set up a fund.
Yeah, I think these are all good ideas, and certainly, I didn't, when I did the budget for this year, I didn't want to put the full ten thousand in there, and I kind of put a challenge out there, and the, and the chamber stepped up, and I think that's a good start. And as Regina said, you know, I think that we get through the first year, and we build on it, you know, so it doesn't stop after tonight. We, this is the beginning. Hopefully, have a process to have a sustainable plan in place for future years, because as growing up, I grew up in the West Side of Madison. We went over to Blackhawk, and, you know, watched them from the golf course, and, you know, and people remember that stuff, and that's what separates, you know, different communities, and it's, it's what brings communities together, much like some of the other things that we're trying to promote, Stoughton, whether it's the music events or the arts. This is just another way to bring people together, and I think that, I don't think we can do enough of that, especially in today's world. I think a sense of community is really important, and I think this would be a step in that direction, so I'm hoping the others that haven't spoken will support it as well. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
We'll do a roll call.
Um, Hirsch?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
Borzma?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Reeves?
No.
Mieske?
Aye.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Healy, are you abstaining?
Yes, abstain.
Um, O'Connor?
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Durantik?
No.
Bartlett?
Aye.
That motion carries on a vote of six to four.
Okay, thank you. Nice discussion. Item number fourteen is R eighteen of two thousand and nineteen, and this comes from the Finance Committee as well.
Yes, Finance Committee met on January twenty-second and recommends approval of R eighteen twenty nineteen, preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers for the twenty nineteen street and sidewalk projects, and I so move.
Second.
And a second by all the person Jensen. All the person Durantik.
I guess Rodney can speak to this?
Sure. Standard process that we're using, as we have in other years, where we initiate the, the preliminary assessment process by having this resolution. We prepare the plans and specifications and the estimates of costs. Those are then shared with the affected property owners. Public hearing is scheduled before the common council, and the common council will consider that action. The, the public hearing will likely be in April.
Okay.
All the person Durantik, and then Johnson.
Yes, I'm one of the people who voted against this because of the sidewalk on Patterson Street. Again, it is due to priorities. I see a second sidewalk on Patterson Street as being a very low priority. We have collateral streets in this community that have sidewalks on only one side. So we're talking blocks and blocks of collateral streets, which are busy streets that have sidewalks on only one side. Some of those collateral streets actually lead to schools. We have a neighborhood that was built in the nineteen seventies and the nineteen eighties that has blocks and blocks and blocks of no sidewalks on either side. As far as I'm concerned, before we start spending tens of thousands of dollars on sidewalk, on a street that's only two blocks long, that has very light traffic, we should be using that money, if nothing else, to try and put sidewalks on both sides of the street, on collateral streets, and especially streets that lead to schools. We should be looking at streets that lead to parks and anything, any of the areas that are heavily trafficked, like the downtown. Do we need to work on any of the sidewalks in the downtown area? To me, we have limited funds, and we should be targeting our limited funds to specific priorities. And so, for me, having a priority of collateral streets, streets that lead to schools, and neighborhoods that, like I said, block. neighborhoods that, like I said, blocks and blocks without sidewalks. I know this because I walk that neighborhood. So, I will vote against this, and I've been voting against any of these because of the sidewalk that's going to be placed on Patterson Street, which to me is a low priority sidewalk area, because it already has a sidewalk on the north side.
Okay, Alder Person. I had Johnson, then Jensen, and then Boersma.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the approval, three to two, is that correct?
Yes, that was, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, and then Alder Person Jensen, and then Boersma.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the sidewalk from Patterson Street.
Second.
So, that's an amendment?
Yes, amendment.
So, we have a motion for amendment to remove Patterson Street, and a second by Duransek?
So...
And did you want to follow up on that, or?
No, that's fine.
Okay, you're good. So, then I had Alder Person Boersma was next.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I think Alder Duransek has a great point, but she left out one thing, I think, in her explanation about this, and that is, not only is the city spending money on the double sidewalk on Patterson, but also the constituents are spending money on that, you know, if it's needed, it should be, they should be assessed that, but they do pay half of what we do when we build a sidewalk like that. And so, if it's needed, then we should have it. If it's not needed, I don't think we should have sidewalks on both sides of the streets in every case. I think that that's just not the right thing to happen for Stoughton. I think it has to be done on an individual basis, looking at the particular street. And if it's needed on both sides, then do it. If it's not, I know what our, I know our precedent, but I, you have to look at what's happening with our, with the fairly significant amount of money that not only the city pays, but also our constituent pay.
Alder Person Hirsch, and then Bartlet?
I just guess, I go back to our comp plan survey, where the majority of people said that they'd like a walkable community with sidewalks on both sides. And, you know, yes, we have sidewalks on the other side, but if you're a person that is disabled on the wrong side of the road, that doesn't have a sidewalk, you have to somehow safely get across to where the sidewalks are. I think, I like the idea of being more ADA compliant. I know that this is an expense, but I also walk this neighborhood, too, and it is a pain in the butt to have to figure out where the next sidewalk is. You know, you walk, and all of a sudden, okay, sidewalk ends. Now, you gotta try to find a next sidewalk, and then sometimes there isn't any sidewalks. So, I go back to what the people stated in their survey, which is that they actually wanted a more walkable community. Every single year, people say, oh, that street isn't walk, well, you don't know if it's walked or not if there's no sidewalk. I mean, of course, if there's not a sidewalk, you can't compare what is there now, because there isn't a sidewalk, versus what could be there when people, when there is a sidewalk. So, I guess I like the way it is. I like to see our community have sidewalks, so it's safe for everybody.
Alder Person Bartlet, and then Johnson?
I'm gonna support keeping the sidewalk in and support the special assessments to go forward. We talked about Patterson Street at length in Public Works, and there were no design challenges or really any engineering reasons not to do it. The council in the past had made the commitment that we were gonna become more of a bikeable, walkable city, and we're working on adding those sidewalks in all those areas needed as we get to those streets, so to more of the schools and parks that do need them, we're trying to add them. If we start taking the sidewalks out, just for one or two people on each street that may not want it, we're gonna end up and stay where we're at now with patchwork all over the place, not having sidewalks everywhere we want them. So, I'm gonna continue pushing to include the sidewalks with the new road projects.
Alder Person Johnson, and then Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. In the neighborhood where I live right now is right around my home, where we did some sidewalks, and there was a lot of big issues last year. The reference to the comp plan, I understand that it might be in our comp plan, but one of the issues that people have brought to my attention, that are my constituents, that if the city wants it in their comp plan, they can damn well pay for it. Other cities pay for it, and it's a lot of money to impose on constituents, and I don't think people even know the policy of the sidewalks until they get that bill a month before the sidewalk's gonna come in, which I've also fought on many times. So, I just think if that's the way the city wants to go, that's all for it. But then let's get some money and help pay these people to put the sidewalks in. If you were coming to get a $5,000 bill for a sidewalk that you don't even want, it creates bad blood with the city, and they get the bill like a month or two beforehand, even if they do go to the open session, open house, they ask, and it's like, the numbers aren't out yet. So, I'm just really frustrated with this whole city concept of the sidewalks and the constituents pay. And I was talking to some people from some prairie, that they were upset that they were getting sidewalks and stuff, and I said, well, do you have to pay them? They're like, no, why would we have to pay them? So, I just want to let you know that that's coming to me and from the constituents in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Sheil, you mentioned that as part of this process, there is a public hearing with regard to these special assessments and improvements, correct?
Yep.
And if a citizen comes and says, I'll be damned if I want this sidewalk or whatever, what impact, does the city council have a right to then vote in majority and say, okay, you know what, I don't think you should have that sidewalk, or does it really matter?
City council proved they had the authority, they did so last year.
Right. No, what I'm saying is, is there any point to the public hearing? And I don't know, I'm not trying to be argumentative. Does a citizen who comes here for a public hearing and says, I think this is a really bad idea, I don't think you should do it, do we then, as a council, have the authority to then, at that point, vote and say, you know what, no, we're not gonna do this? Or is it too late, baby, too late?
Again, again, I just explained the example. Last year, that's exactly what council did.
You're not, I'm sorry, Rodney. That's not an answer to my question. Just answer the question. Does, do we have the authority at that point to say, no, that's what I'm asking you?
Absolutely.
Okay, I wasn't here last year for that, so that's why I wasn't understanding your answer. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So, before we go on, I just got a couple comments I want to make. First of all, everyone in the community had an opportunity to participate in the comp plan. So, this is a community comp plan. It's not a city council or a city staff comprehensive plan. It's a community comprehensive plan that's done every 10 years by state law, and everybody had an opportunity to participate in that process, either through the survey, or they could have came to the workshops that we had. So, I take a little offense to that, because that's not really accurate. What staff tries to do is they try to follow a policy and be consistent about it in the spirit of fairness. We have a policy, they follow the policy. The policy says, when we're doing construction, that we install the sidewalks unless there's really extenuating circumstances. So, for example, on Patterson Street, last year, we put sidewalks on the opposite side. Some of those residents didn't want it, we followed the policy, they have sidewalks. Now, you want us to be able to go back to them and say, well, you had to pay for yours, but the people on the other side, they don't have to have a sidewalk. So, that's where the fairness question comes in. It makes it really difficult for our staff members to look somebody in the eye and say, we're trying to be fair, but then this happened at the city council. The other thing is, is when we go out and we do the engineering work, we make an investment to pay a professional to go out and bring back a plan. So, if we're paying for them and we decide later, you know what, we don't want the sidewalk, well, then we've wasted taxpayers' money, because we paid somebody to do some work on engineering and then decided not to go through with the work. So, there is a cost, whether we install the sidewalks or not, to the city. So, those are things to take into consideration, and really, the bottom line with me is, if we're gonna make deviations from the policy, change the policy. Now is not really the time to try to piecemeal this thing and make hamburger out of it. We have a policy, we should follow it. If you don't like the policy, let's change it. And every year, we have this conversation, and every year, there's no action taken, and then we get to this point, and then all of a sudden, everybody wants to change their mind. That's not the appropriate time to do it. So, that's my two cents worth. I think Alder Person Reeves was next, and then Duransek.
So, just to piggyback a little bit on what Alder Person Hirsch said, you know, a block is not a long, is not a super inconvenient, you know, sort of thing to cross over, but I have seen people in wheelchairs and walkers struggle to, you know, it's a few steps for us, but people that are trying to make a loop, it's really more challenging. And I really don't think that a lot of us that might not have mobility issues can appreciate that, but it's, you know, you hit that grassy patch, and then you have to figure out how to get around, and you do that, you know, chopped up throughout the city. And we also have to think about, when you say the city pays for it, folks, that's still taxpayer dollars. So, that money's gonna have to come, you know, from somewhere, and I think, and I could be wrong about this, so I was, maybe somebody in Public Works could remind me, but haven't we done, haven't, didn't we have this discussion about what other cities play, pay? And I kind of thought, maybe you can remind us, Director Sheil, I mean, I think that many communities, we're not out of line with a lot of other communities in terms of sharing costs, right?
Curbing gutter and sidewalks are oftentimes shared by percentage with property owners in other communities as well. In Stoughton, the cost share is 50%. So, sidewalk is being installed, 50% is assessed to the property owner, based on the policy and ordinances actually for that. 50% is assessed to the property owner, and 50% is carried by the city, both for sidewalk and curb and gutter. And that's very similar to many communities around here.
Okay, and Alder Person Duransek?
Yes, I just wanted to let the council know that I have rewritten the policy, and I have given it to Public Works, and hopefully, they will be taking a look at it. And I quote in the policy from the comp plan. The comp plan sets priorities, and the priorities are collateral streets, streets that lead to schools, streets that lead to parks, heavily trafficked streets. It does not state that we put sidewalks on both sides of all the streets. And again, let me say the word, priority. Folks, please go to your CIP and look at how many millions of dollars we spend on infrastructure a year. Millions of dollars, streets, sidewalks, stormwater, buildings, all of this infrastructure. We need to prioritize where we spend our money, because to be honest with you, there is no way we are going to be able to put sidewalks on every street on both sides. We do not have that kind of money. So, we need to set priorities. I put together the policy based on the comp plan, which made sense. And basically, I think we need to start to think about what makes sense, because we do not have a money tree. And so, we need to set priorities. And just right around the community, and like I said, look at the collateral streets that have no sidewalks on both sides. And some of those collateral streets lead to schools. There are neighborhoods, like I said, blocks and blocks and blocks without sidewalks at all. Shouldn't we be looking at those neighborhoods and trying to at least put sidewalks on one side? And I understand we have a policy. I read the policy, which was written in 1997. I rewrote it. It's a draft, and hopefully, we'll come up with something that's actually based on priorities, because the way it's written now, every street is equal. Every street has equal weight, and I'm sorry, that just doesn't make sense to me. I think collateral streets do have more important, streets that lead to schools, that lead to parks, heavily trafficked streets. Those have higher priorities, and so we need to start to set that. And I understand that we save money when we do sidewalks along with major construction areas, but I have to tell you, I don't want to spend my money on Patterson Street just because we're gonna have major construction there. I would rather see that money spent somewhere else, like on a collateral street, to put in a couple of blocks of sidewalks where we have heavy traffic. So, that's my say.
I agree. Do you have a hand? Alder Person Haley, go ahead.
I wanted to ask for a clarification, but Mr. Sheil answered that for me, so.
Okay, excellent. Alder Person Jensen, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the reason I made this motion is to create a discussion, which we've had.
Yep.
And I think it's been very important for us to have this discussion. And I'm very glad that Denise rewrote that policy, and I'm hoping that it does come through Public Works relatively soon. But until that policy gets changed, I cannot even, I cannot support this motion simply because of some of the things that the mayor has said. It's been policy, and it's, I don't know, would you say fair or unfair? I don't know. It's just really hard to go against it until we make that change. So, that's my opinion on it.
Alder Person Bartlet, and then Boersma?
I just wanted to make the comment that this is an issue every year. In early 2018, the Public Works did review this policy again. I think they have every year, probably. It comes up every year. After reviewing it, we decided to keep it in place, as is due to fairness and unable to enforce the standards with our staffing in the city. I know there's a lot of collateral streets in my area that have no sidewalks. The only ones I'm aware of are ones that are not actually city, zone for the city. I think Town and Done, I believe, some of them, and other ones. So, I'm not sure how many city ones there are that have missing sidewalks, so I'll look into that. I do have the policy that Alder Duransek rewrote, so we will be putting that on the agenda, so we will discuss it again, so.
Excellent.
Well, Matt would suggest you come here, and I'll show you the area where there are very few sidewalks.
I will come over. Alder Person Boersma?
So, prior to Matt's being the chair of the Public Works, I was on Public Works prior to that, and we've had a number of discussions, and that's probably two years ago now. And one of the issues was that, that came up in our Public Works, was that we have a policy, except that there were some very, very legitimate concerns about sidewalks and curb and gutter and retaining walls in that discussion. And what we did at that point, as I recall, was Rodney had a few, a few people come to him saying, I have a legitimate point, that we did not have this, or we need to make modifications to it. I think that Public Works has tried to address this issue every year, and we have made exceptions. We have made exceptions for good reason, and it may go against our policy, but I think if there's a legitimate reason to make an exception, we should be doing that. And I think Patterson is one example of a potential exception that is necessary.
Okay, have we beat this one to death? Okay, so there is an amendment on the table, right?
Yes.
So, can you read the amendment, Holly?
The motion was to remove the sidewalk from Patterson Street from the resolution.
Okay, last call for comments on this one.
I just need to make sure we're clarifying, because there is sidewalk replacement on Patterson. You're just strictly referring to removing the sidewalk infill component.
On the south side.
Just to make sure.
Okay, all right. So, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
No.
I guess we're doing a roll call.
Aye.
Boersma?
Okay, so I need to, I need to know what I'm voting on.
Okay.
You're voting on what? The motion was to remove the sidewalk infill on the south side of Patterson Street from the resolution. The motion was to remove the sidewalk infill on the south side of Patterson Street from the resolution.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reeves.
No.
Mieski.
No.
Caravelo.
No.
Jensen.
Nope.
Duransek.
Aye.
Bartlett.
No.
Hirsch.
No.
That motion fails on a vote of four to six, with Alder highly abstaining.
Okay, good discussion there. That takes us back to our original motion. So that would be, can you read the original motion? It's the one in the packet, right?
Yep.
So the original motion would be basically to declare the intended special assessment powers for really everything that was listed in there. Any questions on the original motion? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
I heard three.
I think you got to do a roll.
We can do that.
I choose six-four again.
Okay.
Bartlett.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Riley.
No.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieski.
Aye.
Caravelo.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Duransek.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, that motion carries on a vote of six to four.
Okay, you're right, great. Okay, so that one passes, and we'll go on to item number 16.
Okay, that's from Finance.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, sorry.
Fifteen.
Our 19 of 2019, and that comes from Finance.
Yes. Finance met on January 22nd and recommends approval of our 19-2019 authorizing and directing the proper city officials to revise the City of Stoughton policy for scheduled building maintenance fund, and I so move.
Second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Duransek?
Director, do you want to take this?
Sure. So we just made some pretty straightforward changes to the building maintenance policy, just for some clarification. You can see here, we set the annual funding to $140,000, and then clarified where excess rental revenues will go, which they'll be earmarked for the City Buildings Department to pay for, day-to-day maintenance costs, utilities, things like that. We also added some language to include the McFarland State Bank to the policy, and then we just added some clarifications to emergency appropriations.
Okay, any questions or comments for Finance Directors? Friedel? Okay, here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Resolution 20 of 2019, this one's coming from the RDA. Who wants to take this one?
Sure, this is lifting, okay, it's our 20-2019, lifting the council imposed moratorium on the blacksmith shop. And I so moved.
Second.
This is basically what Roger Springman had talked about at the beginning of our meeting. The RDA is looking to have a little bit more flexibility with the blacksmith shop in lieu of what has transpired in the last couple of years.
Alder Person Boersma?
I noticed that our Landmarks Chair is here. And I don't know if to put Peggy on the spot. I really would like to know, Peggy, what your opinion is on this.
I would, I would say it's really not within our rules to do that, but if the council wants to waive the rules, that's up to you guys.
I waive.
Is that a motion to waive?
My second.
Okay, and a second. Any discussion on that? And to waive the rules, we need to have a two-thirds majority. Here are none. All in favor of waiving the rules?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, come on up. Did you have a specific question?
I did, and that is, I know Landmarks has had, has had a fair amount of discussion about moratoriums generally, and this one particularly, because I've been to a couple of Landmarks meetings where it was discussed. And I really did honestly want your opinion as Landmarks Chair on whether or not this is a good idea or not, or whatever. And, you know, the concern is whether it would affect any other moratorium issues.
Well, a few years ago, when we had a complete building, the Landmarks Commission looked at this building and evaluated it for Landmarks status against our ordinance. And it was our opinion that the building was eligible for local landmark status because it was a really critical component of our industrial heritage. You know, this is the place where Met Wagon Works expanded. This was the place where that industry grew and attracted the Norwegian immigrants that Stoughton is now so famous for. Those people came to Stoughton for the jobs at that factory. So this is really, it was really an extraordinary part of our industrial heritage. And, but at the time, there was a lot of controversy about the building. And we declined to take action on landmarking the building because it was counterproductive. The community needed to come together to, to find a solution for what they wanted to do. And so it seemed like a better course of action to let the community have that conversation and let a process play out. Let the process take its course. And that process had its ups and downs. And unfortunately, part of the building was demolished before there was really full consideration given to the building and any development potential. You know, we had had a developer interested in the building who was turned away. And various things happened moving forward. And you all know the history of, the recent history of the part of the building being demolished, and now the condition of what is remaining, what's called the blacksmith shop. I believe that the RDA has been working diligently to find a solution, to find a developer who will restore the building and reuse it. I think that's really all we can ask for, is again, a full consideration of the potential for the building. And I think that that's happening. But if we, we, the RDA, is unable to find a developer, you know, we can't create something out of thin air. And the building is in a precarious condition as it is now. And so I think it's reasonable to, to need to move forward. Either a developer will be identified, and they'll take the building on, and I'd be thrilled, or no developer will come forward, and we're left with this building, and what do we do? And we have a larger redevelopment that needs to move forward. And so I think that as a community, we all need to move forward together. And so I think that the RDA has, like I said, has been working diligently to, to find a solution. As much as I would like to see the building saved, I think that there may be a chance that it won't be. But there are certain things that you have to move forward.
May I, may I just thank you very much for being able to tell us that, that position that you have. And, because I know you represent the Landmarks Commission very well. And, and I was really concerned about that, so thank you.
Well, hopefully, it can be redeveloped. Of course, that's, that would be ideal, so we'll see.
And thanks for, Council, for allowing, allowing the waiver. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Any?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council members? Here are none. We have a motion in a second. All in favor of lifting the moratorium, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no, that motion does carry. Thank you very much. Item number 17, also would come from the Redevelopment Authority. Who wants to take this one?
Sure. Item number 17 doesn't really have a regular number. It's a public works transfer, transferring the rights of the powerhouse to the RDA, so we can hopefully find a developer that will restore the powerhouse into something new that benefits the community, meaning that they keep the landmark structure. And also, I think it's also the Public Works Building as well, so this redevelopment on the riverfront can go forward. And I so move.
I'll second.
What about the rest of the Public Works Buildings?
Well, it includes the Public Works Buildings and the-
You didn't speak to them?
Yeah, I did. I said, and the Public Works Buildings. Didn't I, wasn't clear? Sorry. You, you cased.
So we had a motion, I didn't hear the second.
I seconded it.
Second by Boersma. Did you have anything you wanted to add, Regina?
No, it's, it's, as the Chair of RDA had so eloquently stated, is that we need, if we're going to publish and put out this request for RFEI, request for interest into this site, and we've all along said that these two areas, the Public Works or Public Powerhouse Building and the Public Works Buildings are part of that. Right now, they're in city control for RDA to move forward with the overall development. We need to have it transferred to us. So when we choose a master developer or multiple developers, we have all that in place. I, I think that would be, developers are looking forward that they don't have to wait on all this other paperwork to be done for them to get moving. And so if that, that has been the intention of the site all along, and we just need to move on getting it done.
Okay, President Mieski?
In concept, I agree with this wholeheartedly. I do have concerns. I have concerns for the, not necessarily the Public Works Building itself that is, that is scheduled to be demolished. The, my concern is for the powerhouse. If, right now, the powerhouse is under the protection of the city. The city has the power to ensure the building, make sure it's okay. The city also has funds to do maintenance for the building. The RDA, if it takes over for it, the funds for the maintenance of that building go away. The RDA does not have any money, per se. They borrow a lot of money, but they don't really have any money. I see this as a, it could possibly be another highway trailers building, where the RDA came in possession of a building and sat on it for years, and deteriorated to the point where it's now demolished. And the portion that is left, we just voted on possibly removing that also. This building is, inevitably will be redeveloped into something that is a benefit to the city. However, the RDA, at this point in time, doesn't really need the building. They know they will probably get it if, when the time comes and there's actual interest for that building. This building, the RDA, right now, has been working on a request for interest for about a year now. Not quite, nine months, whatever. That's request for interest, that's not even RFP. Earliest anything would ever happen is minimum of a year down the road, if not more. This building does not necessarily need to be under the RDA's control. Once it becomes there, like I said, no insurance, no maintenance monies. And what could, does that do? When the, when the, when that, when that building becomes of interest, and there is somebody, and there is somebody who is interested in it, I believe the city would be more than happy to transfer the funds then. Until that point in time, that building should stay in the city where it's protected.
Thank you. Alder Person Duransek?
Yeah, my understanding was that a year or two ago, there was money in the CIP to do work on the powerhouse.
It's still there.
And I don't see any movement. You know, so, you know, I, I'm a little concerned that, you know, we're talking about, you know, city control, and yet, the city has had the opportunity to work on the building. There is money in the budget, and nothing has happened. And so I'm, I'm really kind of concerned about, so what's going on here?
Well, I can offer up a couple of things. There was money put into CIP for the building. And we've had, at a couple of times, we've had contractors, historical preservation people out there to look at the building and the condition to determine whether or not, you know, we needed to invest that money. And at this point, we were told the building is solid. We don't need to invest the money. We could still do that. The benefit of not doing that would be, is if the building is sold, or if a private developer gets control of the building at some point, they could utilize state and federal tax credits to do the work. So instead of spending city money and taxpayers' money, it would be done with developer money using tax credits. So from a financial, it would be more beneficial for a private contractor to do the repairs than it would be for the city. But the money is there, so if the RDA did get control of the building, that would be one of the things that we could talk about during that transfer, whether or not that money would still be available. And I know Director Schiele has thought a little bit about maybe what the process would look like as we go through. And my understanding, at least for tonight, is really to begin the discussion, we wouldn't actually transfer the building tonight. There'd be a whole process involved in doing that. And during that process, the types of questions that Alder Person, or President Mieski raised, would certainly be included in that. And did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Rodney?
Obviously, all I suggested is there's, needs to be a group of us, whether it's the City Attorney and Jayman, and the Mayor and I, and the RDA representatives, to hash out some of the particular issues that have been raised, to identify a process in which that transfer occurs. The RDA is interested in moving forward with facilitating demolition and cleanup of the Public Works Site. That's on the same parcel of land as the powerhouse building. So there's some, you know, maybe there can be authority granted to the RDA to move forward with that demolition activities or investigation issues without the transfer. But I think to respect the RDA's request, they want to be solid in their, the expectation of transfer of ownership. And I think we need to chart the course as to how that might look. And that's, I guess, what, if this comes out positively, I think that's what needs to take place. A group of us need to get in the room, start talking about these issues, bring something back to the RDA slash council to articulate and discover whether those are acceptable to both bodies to move this off a dead center.
Alder Person Reeves, and then Boersma?
So as I understand, what we're being asked is just to give our approval to begin the process. And based on the conversations that we've had, I think that that makes a lot of sense, so we don't get stuck in a spot where either the RDA's hands are tied, or the, you know, it gets neglected. I, I'm very confident in the RDA's direction. I, I'm very confident in the RDA's direction at this point, I feel like they have their eye on the ball when it comes to the properties. And I think that you raise a great point about making sure that it doesn't deteriorate, Alder, or President Mieske, so I definitely would like that as part of the discussion, but I do think beginning those discussions sooner rather than later seem like a good idea, if we're not looking at transferring, you know, in the next several days, I think those are the discussions that we need to have, so we are being proactive, as opposed to in the past, where we've maybe been scrambling and then made decisions that maybe weren't very smart, or, so I'll support moving forward.
Alder Person Boersma, and then Duransek?
I too intend to support this, because I think, if I was a developer, I'm not, I would want to be able to deal with an entity that could make some decisions about the development in a, in a whole, rather than going to through, to the machinations of having to go through and get permission from the city and the RDA, two totally separate entities. So I, I'm supportive of this, because I think for, from a developer's point of view, it might behoove the developer to say, yeah, I can, we can make this happen, and not have to go through another whole process of getting it transferred at a later date.
Thank you, Alder Person Duransek?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, you know, there are a number of grants, and obviously, the RDA has gotten a number of grants, and that means that if we want to get a grant to demolish the building, it has to be under our control. And so that's why it's important to start the process, and to try to figure out how long the process is going to take, so that we can start looking at writing grants, you know, to, you know, get some money to help demolish, and then, of course, we know that there's going to be a lot of environmental remediation on that site. And so, I mean, these are all things, you know, obviously, for any of you who've been at an RDA meeting and followed the RDA, you know, this last, you know, these last years, there are a lot of moving parts going on here. And I just want to thank our President of the RDA, Roger Springman, who has really done an excellent job, and all of the members who've been on the RDA, because just in January alone, we had three meetings. So we, I mean, we're really, you know, we're really trying to move things along, and we need your help, because this is, this is going to be, this is going to be a big piece in getting grants, you know, to do that demolition work and remediation.
Alder Person Hirsch?
I have a question, to get this moving, does it go back to a committee, or do we just work, does RDA just work with Rodney and Jamin, or how do, best do you foresee, I mean, I want us to leave here today with a motion of so-and-so is going to work, and we're going to have a draft of this by X date. Is that, how do we go about doing that? Is it just make a motion that Rodney, Jamin, and a representative from RDA, along with the mayor and President Mieske, will work on drafting a draft, and it be, first draft be sent to council by the first meeting in April? Does that sound reasonable?
We're going to strive to whatever you give us to-
I know, I'm just asking the rest of the council, because I think, you know, we could approve this, go, yeah, but if there isn't a direction, I, I think, I would like to make a motion that Rodney, oh, Director Schiel, Director Friedel, along with the mayor and President Mieske-
Attorney Dregney.
Attorney Dregney, and a representative from RDA, draft this process, and to present it to the council the first meeting in April.
Is, is that, do you think that's reasonable?
It may be sooner.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't think it needs to be done in a motion, I think it just can be done as direction.
Whatever you want to do.
I just wanted to be out there that we actually, there's a process within this council that's giving them direction that, instead of just like, yeah, yeah, it's a great idea, let's, okay, this is what's going to happen.
You don't really need to do the motion, it can be done just with the direction of staff.
Okay, I'm directing-
So by April, the first meeting in April?
Yep.
Okay. All right, sounds like your direction. So, and we do have, the motion is actually on the table. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries, so we'll, we'll be talking some more about that, and hopefully sometime between now and April. Item number eighteen, consideration and possible action regarding Boardman Clark request for conflict waiver regarding possible discussion with school district regarding wide area network currently used by both the city and the school district. And I'll try to walk you through this with maybe a little assistance from Rodney. So basically, we were approached by this school district through the attorney, we have some fiber optic line that has been shared with the city and the school district over the years, and we have some commonalities in some of the attorneys we use, so from time to time, we have to give permission for somebody to use attorney that we may also use for some of our pro, our projects. So basically, what they're asking for is to allow the firm here, Boardman Clark, to do work on behalf of the school district to start a draft, to kind of outline what we have for fiber optic optics that we share, and really what the conditions of our agreement are. Right now, we really don't have anything defined that I'm aware of, did you have anything to add, Rodney?
You're accurate, you're correct.
So that's about as simple as I can put it, since I'm not an attorney. Are there any questions on that? Otherwise, we would be looking for some sort of an action to authorize that. Any agreement that would come out of this, obviously, this council would have to approve anyway, based on our attorney's recommendation, and Assistant Utility Director Hoops has his hand up.
Yeah, I just have one comment. The electric utility uses Anita Glucci to create and negotiate our pole attachment agreements between the various entities. We do have a pole attachment agreement with the Stone Area School District regarding the fiber. This agreement, as I read it, doesn't address the pole attachment contract, it doesn't look to be that they're looking to renegotiate that, so we don't have any concerns. I would just voice that if they are looking to start renegotiating their pole attachment contract, that we would strongly consider protecting our right to use Anita Glucci, since she is basically the statewide expert on that topic. So, again, I don't feel it's relevant here, but just one thing to consider if their scope does expand.
And we had a similar situation with Anita, like Brian mentioned, she is the expert, she's actually doing some statewide work for our League of Municipalities on cell tower stuff, and we actually had to seek a waiver from TDS to use her services for some work that she's doing for us, because she also works for them. So it's not uncommon that we run into this situation, and maybe Alder Person Riley can shed some light on it.
Well, thank you, now, actually, this seems perfectly common to me and appropriate with respect to this request. What I just was curious about from Brian is, which firm is it that Attorney Glucci works for, is it Boardman, or is it-
Yeah.
Boardman Clark? Thank you, yeah. No, this, this just seems very commonplace and straightforward to me as I read it, so I'll support it.
Okay, somebody have their hand up, Alder Person Jensen?
This is communications, what fiber optic communication, it has nothing to do with WSCL, or without any of our cable, right?
I don't know exactly where all the fiber optics go in our system.
It's my understanding it's a community fiber network, I don't believe it affects the WSCL.
Yeah, so it's just communications.
John Montgomery would be involved in the discussions related to the city's interest for the wider network.
So, I guess-
What do you want from us?
What's that?
What do you want from us?
I guess I, I want permission to sign this waiver.
Have a motion to proceed.
Yes.
So moved. I'm sorry, Greg already moved it.
Did you move it?
Thank you. Counselor, he did, I apologize.
Motion by Jensen, and a second by Reeves, was it? Okay, any more discussion on this one? Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. You jumped the gun. I had a motion adjourned by Boersma, was there a second?
Second.
Second by Caravelo, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, thank you very much. Got a lot done in a short time.